Good evening, and welcome to the annual meeting of the town council, Tuesday 20th of May, at just slightly after seven o'clock. Welcome on. Yes, moving on, what's that kind of a matter? Right, we'll go right on to the agenda. And the first item is to elect the mayor for the ensuing year, and to receive the declarations of acceptance of office. So do we have any proposals?
I'd like to put mine in, uh, please.
Second, yes, I was not saying all that, so. Right, so all those in, uh, I thought you would go quite a bit more than each one, more than one. Or we have to consider any nominations, any other nominations supposed to be, yeah?
I would nominate Elise Udon.
I'll second.
Okay, is there any more nominations? Okay, so we've got on the, uh, the first nomination.
Proposal for councillor Beeston as the mayor for the ensuing year.
Yes.
All's in favour.
All's in favour. All's against? No abstentions?
Six for, seven against.
And we move on to the second proposal.
Second nomination councillor Don Chair.
All's in favour? All's against? Abstained. That's it, so thank you for that. And with that, we have a newly elected mayor of the town council. I'd like to welcome you on.
Thank you.
To come and accept your change of office and take the hot seat. I'd like to thank everybody for the support they've given me in the last, uh, twelve months.
Thank you for all your efforts as well.
For all your support behind our new, new elected mayor.
Are we allowed to say that? Are we allowed to say that before we move on? Are we allowed to say? Um, just want to say thank you for everything that you've done this last twelve months, really. Um, you've been really visible to people of Shaw, and you've done all your fundraising, running half marathons, and getting involved in charity work, and being a visual presence here every market, putting up visibo, and always the last ones to leave, so thank you, thank you for everything.
No, thank you. So my wish here will be outstanding. Thank you. As a fair representative of the town council, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Boo. My job's that of joy.
I'll put this one on. My next one. Okay, okay.
Yeah.
I'm fine.
Okay. So we'll move on to the second item, and it's to elect the deputy mayor for the ensuing year, and to receive the declaration of acceptance of office. Do we have a proposal?
I'd like to put myself forward. Second.
Do we have any further proposals?
I'd like to propose councillor Nevesy Lee Nevesy.
Second.
I'll second that.
Yes.
Chair, which Nevesy?
I said councillor, sorry, Lee Nevesy, I didn't say, sorry. It's a bit difficult with, I'll raise my voice, sorry. And two Ls as well.
Any others? So at this stage we're in centre of it?
Yes, so we have two nominations, first one's a nomination for councillor Beeston.
Yeah.
We've all, if you're going to ask yet, sorry.
Yeah, all in favour.
Yeah, all in favour of councillor Beeston.
Six.
Thank you. Councillor Lee Nevesy.
No.
We have to vote against and abstained.
I'll make a point.
Yeah. All's against? And abstained. So that is.
So now we're off for second nomination councillor Lee Nevesy.
Sorry.
All in favour? Against? Against abstentions?
Any abstentions?
That nomination is carried, councillor Lee Nevesy has been elected as deputy mayor for the ensuing year.
Congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Want to receive any apologies for the absence of this meeting? Do we have any?
I should give a thanks?
No.
Thank you.
Right. Number four, to receive declarations of interest in any contract or matter to be discussed in accordance with the code of conduct. Members are required to declare any personal or disposable pecuniary interests, including the nature and extent of such interests that they may have in items to be considered at this meeting. Members are also reminded that any change to their declaration of interest must be notified to the monitoring officer at all metropolitan borough councils within twenty-eight days of this change. This is a legal requirement.
So if there's anything to refer to, I'm the chairman of the committee, so I have to declare anything that happens. Thank you.
As is a personal non-pecuniary interest.
Thank you.
Councillor Hamlet?
Same for me, but treasurer.
What, sorry?
Same for me, but treasurer.
Right.
Thank you.
Is that everybody? Yeah? All done on that matter?
Okay.
Right, number five, public participation to allow any questions, reports by members of the public on any matters relating to the agenda of this meeting, or any matters the public would like the council to consider on a future agenda. Period of time designated for public participation shall not exceed fifteen minutes, unless directed by the chair of the meeting, standing order three E and F. A reminder that members of the public are not allowed to raise issues when council is in session. Okay? We'll move on to six. To approve as a correct record of the minutes of the following town council meetings. The extraordinary meeting, fourteenth of January twenty twenty-five, which can be found on page five.
Yeah, how much of the proposals?
I'll second that.
All in favour? Yep.
If I ask, can I just say it's a composite proposal? As in you're asking to deal with them all at the same time? Deal with them all at the same time?
All the, uh...
All the, no, no, yeah.
Well, if it can be done at the same time.
I have read them through, yes, yeah.
Right then, yeah, I can, I can look at that, yeah. So if we can have a composite proposal?
Thank you.
Composite? Yeah.
It's all the articles, nine and six. Yeah.
Councillors Nevesy's proposed adoption of...
The extraordinary meeting fourteenth of January, the extraordinary meeting the twenty-eighth of January, page six, the extraordinary meeting twenty-fifth of February, page seven, extraordinary meeting eighteenth of March, page eight, and the ordinary meeting twenty-fifth of March, page nine. All carried? All in favour? Yeah.
Okay, against?
Against? Any abstentions? Item seven, to consider and adopt minutes of the committees. First one, Environment Committee, the fourth of March twenty twenty-five, page eleven.
Chair, are we happy again to do a composite on this?
That's can be a proposal, yeah?
Yeah, I have, I've throughed these and I'm happy to propose all, all those items in, in, uh, in item seven.
I'll second.
Just to be clear, to the planning and resources committee minutes at task. It's a complete mess, I should say.
So the environment events and events. Are we happy to have a composite proposal then on that?
Yeah, I'll put it up.
Second. I'll second it. All in favour? Against? Any abstentions? Not. Outstanding minutes awaiting council, uh, sorry, committee approval. The next scheduled meetings are as follows. The Environment Committee of sixth of May twenty twenty-five, the next meeting, will be the third of June, to be confirmed following the annual meeting of today. The events, grants and awards, play table will be the fourth, sorry. The next meeting will be the tenth of June, to be confirmed following today's meeting. The next meeting and the planning, it should be the twentieth of May, but we've obviously...
That's today.
That's today, obviously, but we, we scheduled that.
Yeah, it was a, it was a, there was an error, Chair, it should have just said the twenty-seventh.
Yeah, because that should be the twenty-seventh of May. It should have been the other one.
Yeah, yeah, just...
We found on that one. For the resources, policy and promotions committee, meeting of March, the next meeting will be the seventeenth of June, to be confirmed following the annual meeting of tonight. Seventeenth of May. Item eight, twenty-five, twenty-two, twenty-six calendar of meetings, which is on page seventeen, to review the calendar of meetings for the ensuing year.
If, if I may, through you, Chair, before, that's colleagues to, to explain. There was a mistake, a mistake of the planning committee meeting. The mistake's the thirtieth of December. Thirtieth of December. Uh, councillors previously, when we've done this, asked not to have any meetings beyond the middle of December. Because of the past, it has sometimes conflicted with invitations to casual singing at other festivities, so...
And in fairness, there are, we've got a few and far between kind of occasions at that time.
Yeah, so, um, just wanted to point out that it shouldn't actually be in the...
I'm happy to propose a calendar meetings with, minus the date of the thirtieth of December for the planning.
I'll second.
All in favour?
Can I propose a proposal amendment to the calendar?
Yeah, exactly.
Uh, for ordinary council meetings, I don't think four's enough. And I think the amount of extraordinary ones we've called in this year, I think it's four or five. If we have six a year, every two months, um, I think is more suitable. It still falls that January is the precept and March is the budget, which weren't catered for this year, to become extraordinary, I'm certain, and then with me as the annual council.
Can I speak? Thank you. Um, yes, that's second board, what Tom said there, um, but we're not saying we're having a minimum of, we're at a maximum of four. And I think what highlights with the extraordinary ones is they've been called when things have been relevant. And I think, uh, clearly with, with hot subjects, should we say. And I think, um, that, you know, provides a more reactive council in terms of about what's going on, so, uh... I, I, I'm sorry, Tom, I disagree, I think we should keep it as is.
Any further comment?
So going five months without meetings is reasonable.
Well, I would say, Tom, yeah, if there isn't, uh...
Can I make councillor Pankas, please?
Sorry, councillor Pankas. Um, yeah, if, if there's no necessities. The reason we put this in place is specifically, like I say, so we could deal with, uh, issues as and when they happen. You're aware of the extraordinary meetings we've called and the content of them. Um, so we've, we've not been having meetings for meetings' sake.
And can I, can I just be clear, it is a minimum of four, but that doesn't mean we only have four, does it?
No, if we do need to, we can call for the extraordinary one.
And what's the notice period, sorry, Chair, can I just ask, what's the note, you know, like to, if we want to add in another meeting extra, and then what's the notice period we give councillors?
Well, it's still pretty clear there's notice, but we have a processing standard orders to evolve that as an extraordinary meeting, but we do have an outstanding proposal on this side. So, and going back to, sorry, to councillor Pankas, proposing additional dates, what would those be for, for colleagues to consider?
So May now, then July, two months, September, two months, November, two months, January for the precept, March for the budget, back in leg. Doesn't fall in August or December, which is normally we don't have meetings in August. December's a busy period, so nothing disrupted by it. And I just think it's better for transparency to the public that we serve, to have regular meetings, and especially not a five month gap. That's nearly half a year.
I'll second that.
All in favour?
Can I ask for a call to the board? Can I, I had round stop on the list.
I do apologise, councillor Williamson.
So, thank you. Um, yeah, I think councillor Pankas is right. We need to have more of the meetings, um, and from our side, uh, this is when we get to see what you do. So, um, yeah, I'd like a recorded vote, I'm even wanting to go with that proposal, thank you.
So the proposal is, in addition to the ones that are already on this calendar of meetings, one in July, one in September, obviously there's already one in October, additional one in November.
Well, no, it moved the October ones to November.
Oh, sorry.
And then January and March, which are on there anyway.
So requests to be made for recorded votes on this?
All in favour?
Yes, please.
All in favour?
Sure. Sorry, I didn't.
It wasn't in paper.
Beg your pardon, I didn't realise you'd, you'd knew we'd gone to the vote. Against?
Against?
Thank you. We have five, five votes in favour, councillors Williamson, Pankas, Swift, Saitz and Hamlet. Seven votes against from councillors Dunn, Lisa Nevesy, Riley, Lee Nevesy, Martin, Sarah Hins and Dennis Baker. Any abstentions?
Sorry?
You didn't ask if there were any abstentions?
I did, actually, yeah.
Sorry, did I?
I said councillor Beeston.
Thank you.
Sure, can I, back to my proposal, I propose we accept the calendar as is, minus the thirtieth of December for the planning meeting.
I second.
All in favour? And against? Any abstentions? No abstentions. All right, moving on to item nine, committee terms of reference, schemes and delegation.
Oh, what?
To review and adopt the attached terms of reference and schemes and delegation for council committees, the Business and Commerce Committee. Page eighteen, is this one?
So, yeah, if I may, through you, Chair, there are three amendments I've handed out prior to start of the meeting.
Right.
That would relate to item nine point one, the Business and Commerce Committee. Um, item nine two, the Environment Committee, and nine four, which is the Planning Committee.
How much?
Yeah. Um, the, if I may as well, Chair, to add to that, that the, the main reason for the amendments was to replace the word parish council.
Yeah.
Can I propose a composite vote, please, on this, uh, item?
Anybody second that?
I'll second that.
All in favour? Against? Abstentions?
Motion to carry.
Motion to carry. Ten. Leader of the council to review the role of the leader of the council and agree further action, page, uh, twenty-seven.
Chair, my opinion from the leader.
Translates.
Um, so we, we went through the, um, the information that's sent out, you know, it was sent out a tiny bit later than the, the, um...
Yeah, it should have gone as attached.
The template, weren't it? It should have gone as attached, it came out later. Um, just to give us a little bit of time, um, to look at any amendments, wonders whether we could defer that to the next meeting, but keep it as, uh, the status quo and continue with Martin as leader, and then, um, bring that back to the June meeting, just to talk through some of, you know, whether there's any amendments to the role, it's relatively new roles well, isn't it, so...
The next meeting.
Right, that's my proposal.
Is that due to the, uh, due to the, uh, the length of the, the basis?
Yeah, and I suppose it came Friday morning and...
Yeah, yeah.
Not the way we planned and things.
So I have a proposal.
So proposal then, now?
Yes.
Yeah, proposal.
No, just have the questions. What's the meeting in June?
Sorry, I said the next, the, sorry, is it not meeting?
The next meeting.
The next meeting, I as well, sorry.
We will need...
To appear on the next agenda for the full council meeting.
Sorry.
I hope, yes, well made.
No. We will need a meeting in June. Yeah, apologies for that, we will need a meeting in June to sign that free account.
Thank you.
The full count?
Right, I'll second the, so the proposal.
Yeah, that can be an extraordinary meeting, can't it?
It can be.
Right, well, that, that's covered then, yeah?
Yeah.
Sorry, have you seconded?
I've seconded that, yeah.
That's proposal, I said, I've seconded, I like. All in favour? Against? Any abstentions? Motion to carry.
Does that mean, um...
The status quo.
Status quo, yeah.
Thank you.
That was part of the, that was part of the course.
Thank you.
Agreed.
No real evidence. Item eleven, committed to the council to call for nominations and appoint chairs, vice-chairs of the members for the ensuing years to be the Business and Commerce Committee. And from that, I was about, thank you. So anybody who should propose for chair of the Business and Commerce Committee?
No, no, thank you.
Yeah, yeah, right, okay.
Oh, sorry about that, yeah.
What was it, sir?
Talk about the football.
Well, you can't vote for the chair if you've not got members of the committee. The delegate, the term of reference you've just agreed says, the chairman and vice-chair of the committee to be appointed from amongst the members of the committee at the annual meeting.
Just appointed, we've just appointed them.
Can I propose councillor Keith Swift to the Business and Commerce Committee?
Sorry, what, what, what we appoint him first, the chairs and the vice-chairs?
No.
They'll be committed membership.
The actual members.
Oh, right, okay.
And then the church comes, wants to mete over the membership, yeah?
I second it.
Yeah.
I am.
Can I have the rest of the call, please, Tom? Oh, I'm sorry, six.
Yeah.
Committee membership, thanks.
All in favour? Against?
Can I propose Tom Pankas?
Yeah. Sorry, councillor.
Can I propose Tom Pankas? Should we write it on Business and Commerce?
All in favour? All in favour? Yeah. Against? Any abstentions?
Can I propose your Beeston? Business and Commerce.
I would, I would want.
Okay.
Okay, starting that.
Can I propose councillor Martin?
I'll second that. All in favour? Against? Abstentions?
Can I propose Lee Nevesy? Please.
Yep.
I'll second that.
All in favour? Against? Any abstentions?
Can I propose, I wish you'd all...
I'll second that.
All in favour? Against? Any abstentions?
Could I propose Ken Speta?
I'll second that.
All in favour? Against? Abstentions?
Can I propose Lisa Nevesy?
I'll second.
I'll...
All in favour, sorry. Against? Any abstentions?
Can I propose Sarah Rethinks? I'll second that.
All in favour? Against? Abstentions?
Can I propose councillor Riley, please?
I'll second that.
All in favour? Against? Any abstentions? Anyone? All on that?
You have elected the chair, don't you?
Yep, so moving on to, I'd like to, chair and vice-chair.
Can I propose the chair of the board for first, yeah?
Yeah, chair.
Um, can I propose councillor Martin?
I'll second that. All in favour? Against? Abstentions?
As vice-chair, could I propose Lee Nevesy?
I'll second that.
All in favour? Against? Abstentions?
And Marchionne Carey.
Yep, so
Yep, so we've elected.
So, as far as the Business and Commerce Committee concerned, through you Chair, elected Chair is councillor Martins, Vice Chair councillor Lee Nevesy. And the members, the rest of the members of the committee comprising councillor Dom, councillor Baker, councillor Lisa Nevesy, councillor Sarah Hinks and councillor Riley.
Okay. That's all, we'll move on to the Environment Committee.
Can I nominate Joe Beeston?
Retract.
Strike.
Can I propose Howard Stine?
I'll second that.
All in favour? Against? Abstentions? One.
Can I propose Sarah Hinks?
I'll second that.
All in favour? Against? Abstentions?
Can I propose Diane Williamson?
All in favour? Against? Abstentions?
Can I propose Alyssa Doherty?
I'll second that.
All in favour? Against? Abstentions?
Can I propose Lisa Nevesy?
I'll second that.
All in favour? Against? Abstentions?
Can I propose Chris Riley?
I'll second that.
All in favour? Against? Abstentions?
Can I propose Dennis Baker?
I'll second that.
Quick, I mean.
All in favour? Against? Abstentions?
Can I propose councillor Martins?
I'll second that.
All in favour? Against? Abstentions?
Can I propose Lee Nevesy? I'll second that.
All in favour? Against? Abstentions? Right, we'll move on to point Chair.
Can I propose Sarah Hinks?
I'll second that.
All in favour? Against? Abstentions? And to point Vice Chair.
Can I propose Alyssa Doherty? Please.
All in favour? Against? Abstentions? Well, Marchionne Carey, we know quite solid.
Let us recap, Chair, Chair of the Environment Committee is councillor Sarah Hinks, Vice Chair councillor Dom. Members comprising councillors Sarah, sorry, Lisa Nevesy, Chris Riley, Dennis Baker, Mark Hins and Lee Nevesy.
Right, moving on to the Events, Grants and Awards Committee.
Can I propose councillor Joe Beeston?
I'll take that.
Be easy then, Sam, you tell me, yeah?
I'll, I'll second that.
All in favour? Any more? Any against, sorry? I need a drink.
Sorry. Sorry, I did vote better off that.
Right, sorry.
Do you do that?
Any against? I can assure you he's not a walker. Right, sorry, so we've just overlooked that, any against? Any abstentions? Thank you.
Can I propose Sarah Hinks?
Yep.
I'll second that.
All in favour? Against? Abstentions?
Can I propose Lisa Nevesy?
Any second?
I'll second that.
All in favour? Against? Any abstentions?
I propose Martins.
Any second?
I'll second that.
Need a second, all in favour? Any against? Abstentions?
Can I propose Lee Nevesy?
Yeah, I'll second that.
All in favour? Any against? Abstentions?
Can I propose Alyssa Doherty?
I'll second that.
All in favour? Against? Abstentions?
Can I propose Dennis Baker?
I'll second that.
All in favour? Against? Abstentions?
Can I propose councillor Riley?
I'll second that.
All in favour? Against? Abstentions?
Can I propose councillor Hamblot?
I'll propose councillor Pankins.
I'll second both those, I'm a lady.
I'm just gonna do a composite vote. Shall I copy that?
All in favour? Against? Abstentions? No more proposals? We'll move to appoint a Chair and Vice Chair.
May I appoint Chair, please?
Yep.
Point councillor Lisa Nevesy as Chair, please.
Who's Sarah?
Councillor Lisa Nevesy as Chair, please.
Yep.
I'll second that.
All in favour? Against? Any abstentions?
Can I propose the Vice Chair as Lee Nevesy? I'll second that.
All in favour? Against? Any abstentions?
If I may through you Chair, though, you just voted as far as the Event Promotions, sorry, Event Grants and Awards Committee is concerned. The Shire near Chair councillor Lisa Nevesy, Vice Chair councillor Lee Nevesy and the remainder of the committee comprising councillors Mark Hins, Sarah Hinks, Alyssa Doherty, Dennis Baker and Chris Riley.
It was first on, didn't it?
Yep. Moving on to the Planning Committee.
Can I propose myself and councillor Swift?
I'll second that.
All in favour? Against? Any abstentions?
Can I propose Lee Nevesy, Alyssa Dom, Dennis Baker, Chris Riley and Sarah Hinks as a composite?
I'll second that.
If I may, Chair, I just, sorry, I didn't quite catch.
Sorry, so I would like, as a composite, I would like to propose Lee Nevesy, Alyssa Dom, Dennis Baker, Chris Riley and Sarah Hinks.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
All in favour?
Can I nominate myself, please? I'll second that.
All in favour?
Thank you.
Against? Abstentions?
Can I nominate a Lee councillor, sorry councillor, Lee Nevesy as Chair?
I'll second that.
All in favour? Against? Abstentions? Marshall.
Can I nominate Alyssa Dom, please? I'll second that.
All in favour? Against? Abstentions?
Thank you, Chair, that concludes the Planning Committee nominations. You just voted to elect us Chair councillor, Lee Nevesy, Vice Chair councillor Alyssa Dom and the remaining membership comprising councillors Sarah Hinks, Dennis Baker, Chris Riley and Joe Beeston.
Thank you. Resources, Policies and Promotions.
I'll move myself and councillor Hamblot.
Second that.
All in favour? Against? Abstentions?
As a composite, could I nominate myself, Lee Nevesy, Lisa Nevesy, Sarah Hinks, Alyssa Dom, Dennis Baker, Chris Riley and Joe Beeston?
I'll second that.
No, I don't want to.
You don't wanna, let me, let me, I'm sorry, restate. I'd like to vote as a, nominate as composite, myself, Lee Nevesy, Lisa Nevesy, Sarah Hinks, Alyssa Dom, Dennis Baker and Chris Riley.
I'll second that.
All in favour? Against? Abstentions? Finally, Transition Committee.
We've got who's
Oh, sorry, I do apologise, yeah.
I do believe, Chair, that the resources that we've voted on in full council, the leader of the council is automatically nominated, Chair. Just for reference. On that, just that we need a Vice Chair.
He's good to vote as Vice Chair, then.
I propose Lee Nevesy.
I'll second that.
All in favour? Against? Abstentions? Transition?
What's key? Wonder who should it be? I'll give you that. Can I make the proposal, sorry?
Yeah.
We won't be making nominations if that speeds things up.
Okay, that's fine. We set up the, we set up the transit We set up the transition committee with the specific aim of getting the Parish Council over to a town council footing. Although we've still got lots of projects which are currently underway, I do believe we are now generally accepted as a town council. And so I think therefore, rather than having potential duplication of resource, I think we should close the transition committee down and pass on outstanding business and roles and responsibilities to resources.
I'll second that.
All in favour?
I think I will.
Oh, sorry, I do apologise.
That's all right, I'm trying to get home, trying to get to your gin, I agree with you. Could, I don't have a problem with that, but why did we just approve the scheme of delegation in terms of reference of it, if you're gonna scrap it, why didn't we just?
Well, we're not, I'm proposing to pass over the, the
Let's go to the vote if I'm not sure that
So, so I need to understand what we're doing, we're just not making appointments to it, we're not killing it then? Or are we killing it?
No, no longer exists.
We're killing it and transferring its roles and responsibilities over to
So, why did we approve the scheme of delegation for it and reference earlier? We were gonna kill it.
Because
Because we forgot?
No, because we were validating the, we were validating the role of the committee, their roles and responsibilities still exist, they've just been transferred over to another council. But I'll take your point, you know.
So, the Resources Policy and Promotions delegation we just agreed will be wrong, it needs to suck up anything that's outstanding. If I may, Chair, for yourself. Just kind of put provenance, mate.
Not, sorry.
I, I, I see it as the way, is that the, most of the business has been
Dealt with.
Dealt with, a lot would do with branding. And outstanding business for me, for me, is mainly the website, which is well underway. So, any other business, any other part of the transition would be, as in assets, which would be part of resources anyway, so I just see it defunct in that, at that level now, so I would be happy to second councillor's proposal.
Any further? Can I all up as that?
For me, to pick on councillor Sykes' point. That the scheme of delegation, if that is transferring responsibility to resources, that will need amending.
In the interest of speed, could I suggest we re-present it at this meeting, you're having in June, as I understand, along with the leaders stuff?
Yeah.
And your tidy old, then?
Yeah, exactly, just for your tidy. Members abstain on that.
Yeah, so I withdraw my
No, we're voting on the amendments of the paper, so I was voting on the closing of the committee.
The item will be regarding the
It's gonna be deferred to the next meeting.
Yeah, it's being deferred.
To the next meeting.
With the view extensively of the transition
So, if it could be helpful, you're making no appointments to the committee
Yeah.
And you're deferring resolving the two terms of reference of the two committees, so the business can do, because if someone came up and you haven't altered the terms of reference, you'd be stuck, and how you make a decision. So, what you need to do is make no appointments, and then at the June meeting, you shove what's in transitions in, back into policy and whatever, and then you can crack on.
I concur with councillor Sykes' proposal.
Our suggestion, it's your proposal, mate.
No, I'm happy to second it.
All in favour of that?
Thank you.
Anybody against it?
No.
Start that, next one. Right, moving on to item 12. Town council representatives through outside bodies to call for nominations and appoint representatives for the ensuing year to the following committees. First one, O M B C, sorry.
Before we go any further, can I just inform colleagues that the there are no vacancies this year on the ABDD, it's charity. And the and the Croton Moors user group no longer exists.
The what group no longer exists?
Croton Moors user group no longer exists. Didn't know that at the time of the paper. So.
We'll start with the first one then.
Can I propose, please, for the O M B C standards committee, I'd like to propose the councillor, Lee Nevesy.
I'll second that.
I'll propose Tom Penkers.
Well, it's, it's all the four.
Yep.
Those in favour of councillor Lee Nevesy? Against? Sorry.
Are we, are we doing, are we doing against and for or?
Yeah, I said for, against.
Against.
Sorry councillor Sykes, I thought you had your hand up.
Yeah.
Yes, against.
Against? Abstentions? And councillor Penkers? All in favour? Against? Abstentions?
Thank you councillor Lee Nevesy. So you would go with that one? Pointed to the standards.
All right, well, move to point three then, Friends of Dunwood Park.
Can I nominate Joe Beeston? Is that a conference of interest?
I'm always the chair, I'm the chair, so.
Well, I think it's a separate role, isn't it?
If you take it, but.
It's a separate role.
You're not happy to do both? I can do both, yes.
Agreed, for the first time, we're going to move to make a first.
Yeah, I'll second you, I'll nominate Joe.
I'll second it.
You have a favour?
Any against? Abstentions?
Councillor Beeston being nominated as representative of Friends of Dunwood Park.
Was that you, you nominated as well?
No, there was one abstention.
All right, moving on to High Crompton Park Friends Group.
Councillor Don?
Yeah, I'll second councillor Don.
Any more proposals? Want to take a vote?
So, so the first nomination was councillor Swift, Chair.
Yeah, by councillor Penkers, yeah.
Yeah, so it's.
All in favour?
For councillor Swift.
Councillor Swift? Any against? Abstentions?
Those in favour of councillor Don?
Against? Abstentions?
Councillor Don duly nominated a representative to High Crompton Friends Group, High Crompton Park.
Right, next one, let's start on it. Peace Champion.
Now I nominate Tom Pinker.
Councillor Tom Pinker.
Councillor. I'll second that.
All in favour?
You're the one who's chairman. Thank you.
No one. And the final one, the local food bank organisation.
Now I nominate Dennis Baker.
I'll second that.
All in favour? Any against? Abstentions?
Councillor, councillor Dennis Baker, representative for the food bank organisation, thank you.
If I may, Chair, to yourself. Can I just ask the officers, right to all these organisations, to inform them of the details for some of your auditions and last year's interview sketch, if you're getting in touch.
Right, item 13, governance arrangements. To consider and adopt the following, A standing orders on page 30.
I told you we got.
Councillor Penkers. You second? Councillor Don, you second? All in favour? So the next item, B, financial regulations, page 54.
I'm the source of your doc.
Councillor Beeston, second one. All in favour?
Thank you.
Item 14, safeguarding policy, to review the attached policy and agree further action, page 71.
If I may, Chair, when this is, this was adopted, councillor agreed that we would review this at this meeting. Which is why it's on the agenda.
If I may, Chair, due to the seriousness of the safeguarding issues which were, I'm just wondering whether there would be any training that we could pull ourselves forward for us and, you know, to help us.
If I may, Chair, I've had that conversation with the local authorities, a designated officer. And she and her colleague are happy to offer training to the town council at times to be affirmed at no cost. So if I may, Chair, if I can canvass members perhaps outside the meeting of their interest or will just take part in the training, I'll make the necessary arrangements to O M B C.
Can we make that mandatory training?
That's if that's a proposal.
I believe it should be.
I'll second that.
There's got to be some timescales.
No, no, I get that, you know, it's a bit with the DBS, isn't it? But we've agreed to do it and then there's a timeframe with.
So clearly, if there's a new councillor, then they would.
I do believe, if I may, Chair, that it's a safeguarding for the councillors as well, because it would, in this day and age, it could quite easily, accidentally, you know, not actually, as you should sometimes, which the training would for me, give you that guidance.
And just generate awareness, really.
And it would be, from what they say, it is particular that we're, you know, we're working and striving always to agree to our safeguarding policies at all times.
And keep our communities safe, really.
And I think, you know, as we're all aware, and obviously the safeguarding officer, it's a policy we've had to invoke, so it's, you know, it's something we've got to, I think, be open and transparent about and I think as much training as possible for members would be a benefit to the public.
And it could also go on the website, it's only.
Training.
Just on the training, all the members said they're happy to deliver the training here, or a venue that they have. So as I said, if colleagues are happy for me to just check outside the meeting, I can then synchronise that as.
Yeah.
Councillor Penkers?
Is it, are we going to do it yearly? I was like, obviously we've been on all two years now.
Yeah. I think some, it's, I think some organisations do it yearly, don't they? Some organisations do it three yearly, it's up to us, I think, really, because we've never done it before, so it's not been a recommendation before for those councils, it's within our gift to decide what we do.
Can I propose an amendment to make it mandatory that we do it yearly, if all agree?
Yeah, I'll second that.
All in favour of that, Chair? Councillor Sykes?
Could I just ask, because I can't be the only person sat on this table who already does this. And few, I'm sure you will and other people will. We're not saying that, you know, I suppose you can never do too much of it, but surely if you can prove you've done it, sorry, and the body I've done it with is all the council.
You don't need to do it again.
Get a tick in the box, you don't have to.
But we had that with the DBS, sorry. Where, you know, we all agreed to do the DBS because we are members of this body and we're doing it as this body. I mean, it's unfortunate, but, you know, I believe, Sarah, you've had to do about three DBSs, you need to cover all the bases, you know, I had to do multiple ones, so I accept what councillor Sykes is saying. But I think just from an ownership point of view, and a transparent point of view, I think the training should be facilitated here as a town councillor. Because your role as a ward councillor, whatever, is a separate gig.
Can you? Yeah, so the proposal, sorry, can we just deal with the policy to begin with, Chair, because that is what's prominent on the agenda.
So are we all in favour of agreeing the attached policy, obviously with a view to this?
I've just got one more, Chair, but Mayor, is that sometimes we actually engage people's services. Would it be poignant that they supply DBS checks? I don't know, the ruling on that is 100%.
So any other people attached are involved with any activity with the town council?
They're actually engaged in services, yeah.
Must have a DBS check.
It would be poignant for us to, I'm just, I don't know the rules on that, but I've my first, so. I don't know, is it something we can, we can look into? Is whether it would be poignant to, to request DBS checks for people actually involved in services to the council?
Yeah, there is a section there, isn't there, about in the event of a contractor working directly, the council being deemed to be working and then an area where children are vulnerable, adults may be at risk, then that, then that contractor will be asked to provide their safeguarding policy. You could just put an amendment in there and DBS check.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so. Councillor, it's adding that to that, to the point then, provide their safeguarding policy, DBS, which one?
It's just there.
I think councillor Beeston.
So councillor Beeston.
Yeah, great, thank you for that. I agree, I 100% agree that we need safeguarding training, but I know, myself, I work nine till five, Monday to Friday, that's when they usually do training, so, and I'm not being funny, I'm not willing to take a day off work.
No, we understand that, yeah. But I do, I do believe, sorry, Mayor S. Chair? Mayor S, is it?
Chair.
The Chair? I'm only like three quarters in and, no, they do, do, all the councils do evening training, they do that, they do that to suit.
I'm sure.
All the councils, I'm sure.
Online training, they do.
Yeah, I'm sure there'll be an opportunity. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, because I have a similar issue to yours.
So as I say, Chair, if I can, for all members, then obviously councillor Beeston has specific requirements when it comes to provision of the job.
So those amendments, then I'd be happy to propose.
You're happy?
Second?
Second it.
All in favour?
And just on that, please, on councillor Penkers' proposal that training is not only mandatory, but it's annually.
That's right, all in favour?
Thank you.
Item 15, appointments of authorized signatures to confirm the appointments of two members to author our payments on behalf of the council in accordance with financial regulations.
This, for now, to you, Chair, last one, the signature's been cancelled, Lee Nevesy, councillor Mark Hints. So it's something we renew every year.
I propose that it continues with those two named signatures. I'll second that.
All in favour?
All in favour?
I think, yeah, I think just to add on that, it was a completely up to nightmare getting, changing over, wasn't it?
I think we did have to call on councillor, if I may, Chair, councillor Lewis, who quite a lot of last year at the time, because due to the changeover, it's a, it's particularly difficult.
Thank you.
Yeah. Item 16, volunteering for the town council, councillor Mark Hints, to consider developing a volunteer resource to support town council activities and agree further action.
Yeah, sorry, just to give you the overview on this, because obviously it'll often be passed to a relevant committee. And I just think that one thing that we need to develop and push is community engagement. And I think we run some brilliant functions and events in particular. And I think, you know, we should consider having some sort of scheme where members of the public can sign up and actually be an official town council volunteer. And what my view with that is, not just with events, it could be other engaging social activities to give you just some background, I mean, obviously, as a, as a strategy, it's, it's our, it's our plan to bring as much back to community ownership as possible. And, and, you know, but obviously, things that we can get volunteers in to facilitate and help would be, would be brilliant. And I think we've got a fantastic community, that's the biggest strength we have. But it's not just a question of everyone turning up and trying to do something, obviously, it needs to be managed. There's insurance things to consider, there is obviously, to a degree, a code of conduct. But it really gives people in the community the opportunity to, to buy in with a lot of the positive things we do. And I just think that, like I say, in terms of community engagement, it's a more, it's, it's a positive for the town council and the community as a whole, so that's my overview. And my motion really, my motion is really to pass on to the relevant committee to develop a, a volunteer.
Framework.
Framework, yeah, but I ask the Tony Seag, the chief officer's advice as to which committee he thinks that would suit best.
Yeah, I think it would lend itself to the resources policy of course, committee, particularly around the policy aspect. So that gives us that clear framework about how we deal with this taking it forward. You're quite right, councillor Williamson, there's obviously insurance implications, we need to make sure we've got all that covered.
So would there be, would there be a term of reference drawn for this?
Yeah, there'd be a policy, we'd develop a policy, we, we, in the past, it's been a little bit ad hoc. So I think this is more about establishing the principle and having the practices in place. So I think that's best sits with the resources policy and promotions.
And it's, it's a membership, in essence, to.
Yeah.
To the council.
Yeah, something you ought to say at the start of the meeting, can you ask questions through the chair? Yeah, what I was going to say is the volunteering aspect, really good idea. And I'd love to join it, I really would, but what I want to know is what, what sort of, you saying about projects and stuff like that, what sort of things were you thinking about?
Well, just to give you a couple of examples through the chair, councillor Williamson, would be assistance for helping with the monkey market. It would be assistance helping set up certain events. It could be promotion events, it could be getting involved with environmental things we've got on. I mean, I mean, to, to be honest, councillor Williamson, as a, as a councillor, you can, you can volunteer anyway, you don't have to go through that process.
Well, you do, because we don't have access to other things, we don't sit up committees.
Well, that doesn't stop you.
Welcome to attend any event, Chair. Welcome to take your shot, speaking please, councillor Beeston.
Yeah.
So, yeah, you know, that would be a really good way of getting a better understanding of what the town council is trying to do.
Can I just, sorry, Chair, can I just speak off? On what councillor Hints has said, I do agree that we do need lots of volunteers, as you know, because some of these events are going bigger and bigger. Um, on what councillor Rins has said, I do agree that we do need, um, lots of volunteers, as you know, because some of these, uh, events are going bigger and they're getting better. Um, and I do, in my view, whoever comes forward should be welcome to volunteer.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So there's no more, oh, sorry.
Councillor Beeston.
I do agree with the, the volunteer, but then we, we're saying all the safeguarding DBS thing, we, we need to provide that if we're asking volunteers to come.
Well, just, sorry, through you, uh, Chair.
Yeah.
Um, obviously, it depends what the, the, the specification of the volunteer role is.
I still, I still think they still need the DBS, because.
Well, that's fine, yeah.
You start volunteering for, let's say, the Environment Committee where you're just around the table, then all of a sudden, oh, you're interested in doing something else.
Yeah.
You, I don't think they a hundred per cent need it, yeah, no.
Well, I'm happy to.
Probably don't need to workshop that here, do we really, Chair, in, in terms of when it.
What, in principle, maybe.
So our second, our second councillor says, uh, motion?
All in favour?
Thank you.
Right, item seventeen, motions for consideration, to councillor Penker.
Thank you, Chair, I keep it brief because I accept it very briefly. Uh, first one, to amend the agenda action for, obviously, we get people attending all meetings, some meetings and others, uh, better attendances. I think it's important for transparency and accountability that the public should be able to ask anything they want, uh, by reason, from the public gallery. Um, not just rate to the agenda, and actually, if you read the standing orders, it doesn't say it has to be agenda specific, so I don't know where that's appeared from on the agendas. So technically the motion, although I've put the motion in, it doesn't need to be, because according to our standing orders, there's no limit to what people can ask. It doesn't mean they'll get an answer then, which the standing orders says, and this would keep, if you don't ask to get an answer then, then I should still be able to ask, uh, anything they want.
Okay, thank you.
Through, through you, yeah, um, take on board that comment, councillor Penker. The upper government act states that a summons to attend the meeting specifying the business proposed to be transacted at the meeting and certified by the proper office of the council shall be sent to every member of the council by an appropriate method. So the, what that suggests, what it's saying, it's not suggest, is the agenda has to be specific, because you can't discuss and board anything that isn't on the agenda. If what you're saying is, members of the public might want to raise some matters that are on the agenda, but it's council business, they can be taken forward to the next agenda.
I mentioned council business, the public should be able to ask any question they want about council business, doesn't have to be on the agenda of that meeting, and they don't have to get an answer on that. But they should be able to ask it, and if there's an answer.
Well, the, sorry, can I, I, did I have my hand up first? Sorry, just, sorry, just to, um, I took, I took a little medication tonight, so I'm a bit more, um, not as that animated, should have said, as I usually am, so, no, just, I, I do, I do think this is a, a genuine request. However, the, the, the issues I have with it is, we're here to focus on what's in front of us and what's relevant, and I don't want to get us into any councillor into some sort of Turkish shoot, where, um, people are coming in firing off random questions and, and this, that and the other, and I think there are, if anybody has any questions regarding to council business, we already have methods in place, as I'm sure the chief officer will, uh, will reiterate, so I, 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 I do take it as a sincere thing, but I can't support it.
So just come back on that, Chair.
Councillor Penker.
The purpose of the council, we're put here by the residents, it's not about what's relevant to what is, what's relevant to them, the sort of should be able to ask what they want.
Sorry, just, just to come back to, can you excuse my right reply? They do have the method to ask whatever they want, as the chief officer will, um, their testament to, and if you want, he, he can highlight that. Councilors can respond to any request in terms of a question, but officially the council are obliged to. But what I don't want, um, councillor Penker, is people turning up with non, at meetings with questions that are relative to that meeting, the purpose of the committee meeting and it's, and it's, and the town council meeting is to discuss what's on that agenda. If somebody contacts you with a particular question or a particular issue, then, you know, you put it on the agenda and we'll discuss it.
But we shouldn't have to, they should be able to ask from there now.
There's no searchers.
Big screen, Chair.
The mayor, Chair.
There's no searchers, so we can't ask. Right, councillor Nez, first.
Just, just to put it into perspective, if I may, so what you're suggesting there is, is we're such a planning meeting. Um, we kind of recruit people asking questions about planting trees or signage on car parks.
Yes, they are.
It would, it would not be, yeah, but you, you could, it's not relevant to that committee, so to me. If, if you put in writing to the council, they will get an answer anyway, or they can request it on an agenda, to the correct agenda. They might, 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 yeah, I take on board what you're saying, but my view is the fact that the wrong question is going to be asked to the wrong people. So the committee members of planning might not be able to give the answer that they should be giving, if it's an environmental matter.
So you've got a problem with referring a resident to the right person?
No, no, just to, to bring it up at that meeting.
You're one worse than the best.
Please, please, the Chair, please, councillor, uh, Penker, I thought. Once I finish, please. So what I'm saying is, to make it relevant, it's just not relevant to ask a question, what's not relevant to that committee, and the people on that committee could not give the answer, yes, they can be signedposted to, and say, yes, well, you might be better off speaking to, but it's just, why can't they just write in and they can, they can get the answer from the relevant person?
Right.
Two points, one, just if somebody asks something, most people are reasonable, so they're not going to rock up in it, yeah, you get.
Most.
Ask a random thing, point them in the right direction, and it doesn't say it has to be answered in that meeting, so it can be answered outside, it can be put to a future agenda. Don't get why you don't want to listen to residents' voices, that's what it comes down to.
Madam Chair.
And just hold on a second, can you?
Thank you, Madam Chair, with low due respect to, to all members here, um, because, because I have, I've been, obviously, dual hatted, so I've been in a couple of authorities, but also been to different authorities', um, meetings, and every authority has a different, different way to hold, uh, public participation, public question times, et cetera. Um, we used to have it very differently, uh, on, I suppose, in another guise, in another authority, uh, when it was a parish. Now, however, um, you can, you can set, you, you know, the, the council can set it very differently to how it, to, to what it wants for a committee. However, for a council meeting, I think it's really important that members of the public, if they have an issue, should be able to attend the said meeting and be able to bring up any subject they wish, in my humble opinion, Madam Chair, because I think that's important for the openness and transparency of this authority. I think it's deeply concerning to say the public would like the council to consider, sorry, uh, on any matters relating to the agenda of this meeting. So that then strangles that particular member of public, or members of public here respectively, for that particular member to then have to drift through eighty or pages to then look for something that they wish to hang their issue on for, for the agenda. I, I just, I just think it's, it stymies the ability to, for people to be able to actually say what they wish to say.
Yeah.
Because you're expecting, you're expecting our good residents to then look through eighty or pages, then go, oh, I have an issue, but they may not be able to speak to committees because obviously they may not understand how the structure works. I just, if I may finish, because I'm rounding up now, I just, I just feel it's important that if, and even if that, even if the issue that the resident may not, may, may not have, we have, we have a, a reporting sheet that the, the chief officer reports to, there are four borough councils that may need to pick it up. Or, you know, the chief officer feels that, that jobless, et cetera. I just think it's important that residents can come to us with an issue and say that.
My order.
All right, but I just, I just feel for that openness and for us to be a listening ear to our residents, it's really, I, I, I find it really cumbersome, Madam Chair, and that's all I'd like to say, thank you.
All right, thank you, over to the chief officer.
Um, thank you, Chair, um, might it be, uh, a compromise that members of the, we field all questions or queries in meetings? But with the express, uh, position that we're not necessarily positioned to answer those at the meeting.
But if the standing orders already says that, it doesn't have to be answered then.
Yeah, I'm just talking about what the legislation says.
But our standing orders say it doesn't have to be answered then.
Some of that is a mandatory.
But it's our standing order, if it's, if it's.
Yeah, I know, but I'm trying to say what the law says.
That's fine, but it's reflective of the standing orders.
But the law will override that.
But the law, we, the standing orders are based on the law, we can't just overrule the law in our standing orders, so.
No, I'm trying to say.
It's a little law breaking in the standing orders.
No.
Right, then we're not overriding the law.
Saying that's discretion, but if you want to sign up to it, that's fine, what I'm putting to you is that in order to accommodate your request, would it be a compromise that members of the public can raise questions or issues at any meeting but on the understanding that we're not necessarily positioned to answer them there and then?
Sorry, I'm resisting, Chair, sorry, don't sign.
Yeah, that's, I'm, I'm just asking if councillor Penker.
That's what I.
But it's not a compromise, because our standing orders already say they don't have to be provided with an answer, and our standing orders also say, doesn't say that it has to be rated to the agenda. So technically, they can already ask whatever they want, that shouldn't be in there, I don't really put it there, but that silence in the public would be worth it.
She speaks, Chair.
Right, with respect, least of mercy.
You've missed again, I've had my hand up so many times, you've been missing me, bringing up.
Oh, I'm sorry, just a moment, councillor Nez.
Right, so, I understand, yeah, it is important that residents do want to ask questions, whatever. And I do feel that coming to the right committee on the right night to ask a question is great, however, however, what I do think is, that if the other question to ask that is not relevant to that committee, they should write in a few days before, because it may be on that night we can't give an answer, we might have to research any information. So we, if they write in three days before to whoever it is, whichever councillor they want it to go to, then that councillor then can get the correct information to give them an answer.
Chair, can I just, can, just, I don't think people understand the motion. The point is, in respect of business on the agenda, it shouldn't be on an agenda, because our standing orders don't restrict what people can ask yet. People can come and ask a question, whatever question they want, they don't have to get an answer at that meeting, it can be deferred. If they want an item on a future agenda, they can have that, and if the chair or that relevant committee, or you, if it's a council meeting.
Yeah.
Um, want to defer them to the right people, you can.
That's fine.
Which we already do, should do, because it's the standing orders.
Fair enough.
Councillor Williamson. So in nineteen eighty-seven, the parish council started off, and that was because residents wanted to have a voice and tell all, I said eighty-seven?
Eighteen.
Sorry, um, I didn't, I was, I was thinking it in the head, eighty-seven, nineteen eighty-seven, thank you for the correction. Um, and they wanted a voice so that they could shout at Oldham to say, you, you know, we don't want to be left out of here. But it seems to me now that you are not allowing the residents of Shore and Compton, who elected you and me and my colleagues on here, who you continue to restrict not to come and question us about what you lot are doing on the parish council, town council, sorry. And it's appalling, and all he's asking for is that that chap in the yellow jumper can come to this meeting and ask a question of whatever he wants to do, and he might not be able to get an answer, but he can ask that question, and you're restricting him from doing it.
Can I have a future, right, can I just ask how long this, uh, this agenda business has been on the, the agendas of the, of asking the questions relevant to? How many years has it been, stayed stood as it is now?
You.
Many.
How many years, for many, many years?
Like this is now, a year, a year, before that.
Excuse me, excuse me, I've got a bit of interest in the chair.
Could ask questions.
Councillor Nez.
So I've asked the chief officer to, uh, for how many years has the agenda been written, has it, and that, with the questions to be relevant?
Well, I've been here nine years.
Right.
Since then.
So that, that answered my question.
I'll be happy to. Sorry, I did have my hand up.
And I've had mine as well.
So has councillor.
Well, that's all right.
Yeah.
Do we need to move to the vote, please?
No. Well, I, I, I've just, I'm just, you know, I think there's a bit of politics behind this, if I'm honest, but, but I think, I think, I think there is. Um, look, in truth, we don't restrict, we don't withhold information from, from the public. We are fully transparent and we're fully open about what we do, okay? Um, the second point I would raise is, if people just came to the meeting and asked, say, I don't know, the, the Business and Commerce Committee, and then, you know, asked us something about access to, disabled access to swimming pools in Oldham, you know, it, it just wouldn't, and, 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 and so, so what we're doing is you're clogging up meetings that need to get them with the business in hand. The, the questions that are asked by the public at that time are, are, are relevant to that. Any member of the public can write in to an individual councillor or to the administration team, and they can get a full, we are legally obliged, because this is, right, told me to be F O I D or whatever, even though we don't use that all the time, to get an answer to the questions they want.
In addition, they have, the public do have access to the office if they wish to ask the chief officer any questions as well.
So can I just propose to reject? Sorry.
Councillor Sykes.
Councillor Sykes.
Yeah, I mean, I'd suggest we have a vote on this, um, sooner rather than later, but let's just be clear about what the law says. What you can do is make a decision on anything that you haven't even noticed of in an agenda, but you can discuss anything you want. And the way around it, if you like, is you effectively suspend the meeting for the fifteen minutes of public question, you have what I've just called an open forum, uh, exchange of views, this is fifteen minutes, so it's not a big clog up, we're not talking two hours, but if anybody turns up, they can ask a question, not just what's on that agenda, but about anything else, or somebody can take it away. And that's how it was, and while Tony might have been here nine years, I've been hearing more of that, and I've sat in more meetings where we've had the open forum that changed at the tail end of the last class before Tony, if I remember right. That's not part, if I may, that's not part of the motion, Chair. What's not part of the motion? What you've just come up with the open forum.
Right, are you directing that at me?
That's, I'm sorry, Chair, yeah.
Right, councillor Penker.
I agree with that, and just to reference the clogging up, every meeting has fifteen minutes maximum set, signing for public participation, still, there'd be no clogging up.
Sorry.
Councillor Beeston, do you have your hand up?
There's a lot being, um, I'm trying to listen to everything. To, to be honest, I, I do agree it should be opportunities for members of the public to mention, uh, what they want to mention, whenever they want to mention it.
There is.
In, in a meeting, couldn't we use that as to, as the chair's discretion, maybe, and so if it's not, to, there's fifteen minutes, you add the chair's discretion, instead of just, what's in front of us, maybe that's an option.
Right, so when we go to public participation in every meeting, what are you suggesting then?
Sorry, we've already got on the votes along with.
Yeah, it's in the motion.
No, but, but I'm on about the open forum bit.
It's not, it's not in, it's not in.
No, you can just.
I just want to touch on that, because, yes, the public do have, well, to ask questions, and quite rightly so. So, yeah, not everybody can meet the meeting, uh, make the meetings or whatever.
Agree mail in.
Email, write in, call in, so.
Well, if I may, Chair, it's just, I, I, I think we're too, uh, too vote, because I, I can't support this in, in, in its, uh, in its, in its format now as it appears, without some, uh, members' mail, which, you know, be able to see another meeting, so I propose to move to vote.
Right, councillor Swift.
Take a little motion.
Right, so we're taking this to the vote.
Request a recorded vote, please.
You can, sir.
Indeed.
So recording the vote. So all in favour of councillor Penker's motion? Against?
I do motion, I carry.
Silence in the chamber.
All right, okay.
Next item, Chair.
All right, the next item is to record and publish all meetings of the council and its committees, page seventy-eight.
Thanks, Chair. Well, they can't even accept questions from the public, they can't accept this, but I think all meetings should be recorded, recorded and published for the sake of the people that elected us to represent them, transparency, openness, accountability.
By recording?
Right, it is not.
Oh, you mean filmed?
Yeah. Record and record.
Can I, can I speak? Sorry, talk to the, the, shh.
Sorry, sorry.
That's okay, more silence then. Um, because midnight everyone can make it, there's a few people over there who can't, since they're going to watch at home, the minutes aren't published anywhere until the next council meeting, so people can't even read them. Uh, so I think they should be recorded and published.
I'll second that, I reserve my right to speak.
Um, again, I think it's a genuine, uh, a genuine consideration, and I do, I am mindful I've got, the, the Lib Dems are at recording meetings, um, but what I will say is, really from a, from a, from, from a cost perspective and all sorts of, you know, we, we were the first to bring in recorded meetings, uh, and we record all the full council in accordance, um, with what we've agreed to do. Um, we've also done some special, um, recordings when it's been, there's been a significant public interest, uh, the roundabout, for instance, um, and there's been others that stood in mind at the moment, um, so we do do it. I do take you, you, view on board that the speed of the minutes, um, and it's not a criticism of, of the administration team, doesn't know how, how hard, how, how work they are, how hard, where they are. And they have to be signed off, obviously, um, so I do take that on board, but I, I don't believe, um, you know, we should, we should, and, and I say this as, as I want more engagement, I don't believe we need to redraw every meeting.
Chair, from a cost perspective, I'm sure there are people willing to volunteer to do that, and if we've got town council volunteers, maybe that could be a role. Somebody does, that saves costs.
Councillor Neves.
Adding on to councillor Penker, uh, anybody that, um, you know, would they film it as a volunteer, would need a DBS or a, a vulnerable adult in the film.
It's fine, we agreed before to have DBS, there's not against that.
An equipment.
I don't tell.
I mean, yeah, you're allowed to film anyway.
Yeah, but as a council.
If people want to film, they can film.
Chair. It's okay. Uh, bringing Chair to councillor, I'm not saying the public can't film, they can, but nobody is here tonight. As a town council, on the new standards, which is set out there to serve the people that elected us, why wouldn't you want to record the public? Yeah, but not all meetings are, that's what the motion says. I feel like people haven't read the motion because you don't really know what's going on.
I've read the motion.
Well, then it's not just about tonight's meeting.
Um, I don't know, but councillor Tom Penker, he's normally at every meeting, so, you know, feel free to.
And I commend through the chair.
Whoever you want.
If I may, Chair. I think the, I think the essence of what councillor Pen, Penker is proposing is that the council facilitates the recording on behalf of the council and its committees.
Or transparency.
Yeah, which may, which may be done through volunteers that we take on as part of the scheme.
Don't get the DBS check.
Yeah, so, yeah, appreciate it. Is, is that the sense of what you're proposing, that the council agrees to facilitate recording, video recording of all meetings?
Yes, it says that the council ought to publish and record it of all council meetings.
So I was going to say, just to clarify, it involved at the end is councillor Penker's motion, which I think is clear. But councillor Sykes has her right to speak.
Councillor Sykes.
Let's just have a vote, shall we?
Yes.
Record and vote.
Record and vote on this one, then.
They can't, they're listening more, I mean.
Right, we're going to vote on to record and publish all meetings of the council and its committees, all in favour. Abstentions?
Can I just say something to the Chair? If you want to know, I sat with the, the party in the top of it for four years.
Chair, is it relevant, we've voted and we've got.
Yeah, I'm just making, I'm just making a point.
Up to the Chair whether it's relevant, through you, Chair, sorry. Your show.
Yeah.
Yeah, the more I'm trying to get across to you is, uh, when I was with the, with us for four years, not once was it recorded, that's the point I'm making.
Right, point taken. Okay. Right, and to make ten dates of future meetings, to be confirmed following confirmation of the date approved by the council at its annual meeting on twenty-fourth of May.
Yes, Chair, for, for reference, that was an item that the council considered approximately two hours ago.
Yeah. Item nineteen.
Yes, item nineteen.
Explosion of the public. Order.
Sorry, what were your men?
On item nineteen.
Sorry, apologies, coun, council has to vote to approve the motion regarding controversial nature, which requires the public to withdraw. You vote.
On a favour?
So, no, I've got a question, sorry. I don't know if you think it's whatever, but I was just asking, if themos are only the three things we're debating, why any of that secret? I'm conscious you could have a conversation that might go down a rabbit hole, but they're three things and secret and don't need to be done about to.
Can, can I speak, Chair? Um, under the circumstances regarding this particular, uh, subject, I think the, the, it is, it is, and, and there's no hidden agenda to get people out of the room, there's nothing like that, I think we should do it in, in, with the public present, and I think it would be on the camera anyway, wouldn't it?
Not the co, not the, no.
Wrong? Right, well, I think, I, I, I think in agreement, I think, I think, because we need a consensus and it needs to be, it needs to be transparent.
Did you want to say something, Tony?
No, councillor Sykes is saying, I think, um, not to vote to exclude the public.
I'm just asking the justification for it of what's listed on the agenda. If you can justify it.
No, I, 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 I don't, I don't think there is, as long as we're obviously mindful of, um.
Safeguarding.
Safeguarding issues and such.
Um, through you, Chair, it's, it's been a standard item, um, because of discussion around specific individuals. In terms of appointment, it's always been this way. Um, we currently have a vacancy. It may well be somebody wants to nominate an individual. And which in the past we've always done it as a, as a private matter.
Is that the case?
That's, 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 sorry, that's been the practice, is what I'm saying. You can, you can vote differently if you wish.
I propose then, we, uh, clear the public.
That was a proposal, Chair.
Is that my call, yeah?
Yeah, I'll second it. Sorry, I missed that.
Propose we exclude the public for the next five to twenty.
All in favour? Against?
Well, there's a duty.
Abstention.
Good reasons as to why.
Are we moving on? Right, item twenty. Oh, sorry, yeah. Thank you very much for your attendance. Three nil now. All right, we're back on the board. So we're now proposing, uh, a date for the extraordinary full council meeting in June, which, looking at the calendar, is the twenty-fourth of June, agreeable to all.
Is that Tuesday?
It's Tuesday.
It's a Tuesday.
It's good for me.
There's a planning meeting at six thirty, so it would be straight after.
Twenty-fourth.
Twenty-fourth of June.
No, not the day. Carry on.
Anybody, any issues with that date?
If I may, Chair, just on that, we have to sign off the external accounts before July.
Yeah, so that is.
It can only be done at full council.
Yeah, which would have to be either the twenty-fourth or before.
What normally happens is that the, the audit information goes to the resources committee, which is scheduled for the seventeenth, audit will scrutinise that and make recommendations to council which must follow.
Councillor Justin, twenty-fourth, Chair, please. I'll second that.
I'll, I'll.
Well, agreed on that. All in favour?
Thank you.
Right, thank you very much. And that concludes the next full town council meeting, meeting close, thank you.